I call this the meeting of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, open meeting of October 16th, 2024, to order at 6:30 PM. At this time, recognition of National Merit Scholars.
So, thank you. This evening, we have the privilege of recognizing our National Merit Scholars, and Principal Bevan will be doing the honors, so.
Sure. So, you can see, we have a much larger audience than we ordinarily have. And I've already told you guys, you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, or after our presentation, we'll have, we'll take a break for some cupcakes, and then you're welcome to leave, and there's no harm in doing that. So, so, welcome, everyone. Good evening, and we are excited to recognize some outstanding academic achievements in our school community today. I have many, many things to be proud of and thankful for as a principal of Algonquin Regional High School, but none exciting more than our students' high academic achievement. So, tonight, we take a moment to celebrate our several students who have achieved recognition by the National Merit Scholarship Program. So, I made calls to make sure we knew who was coming today, but that doesn't always result in. Hello, guys. Come on up. I'll give a pause for these people to join us. Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
Parking was tough.
It was. We've got a field hockey game, we've got a lot going on. So, tonight, we are recognizing a singular National Merit Scholar, Scholarship Program semifinalist, and then several, about 19 National Merit Commended Scholars. And so, for those of you who don't know, the National Merit Scholarship Program identifies students who achieve at a very, very elite level of performance on the PSAT. Students who achieve amended scholarship status, finished in the top 3% of the whole country, and that's many of you here. And one of our students achieved National Merit Scholar, Scholarship semifinalist status, and that means that that individual finished in the top 1%. So, we're gonna, I'm gonna call each person up, one by one. You can come on up, I'll give you a certificate, and then you can find your seat after that. And then, once we complete, we'll do a little bit of a celebration. All right. First, a special congratulations to Ben Skilken, who has been named a National Merit Scholarship Program semifinalist. His performance on the PSAT placed him among the top 1% of high school students, as I said, along with his continued high academic performance here at ARHS. Come on up, Ben. And now, we also want to commend the following students for their exceptional performance as National Merit Commended Scholars. These students are recognized for scoring, as I said, in the top 3% of students nationwide, as well as their continued high performance academically here at ARHS on a day-to-day basis. Please join me in applauding them, one at a time. So, first, we have Elizabeth Burton Ozzy. All right. Amelia Missinkul. Dylan Brown. Tanya Clemmons. Claire Devlin. Clayton Jackson. Yugi Kashi. Caroline Lu. Claire Martel. Kyle Miller. Jane Ollanian. Maya Regan. Rashiel Singh. Sophia Wang. and Carrie Zen. Is there anyone who wants to be tweeted "Yes" that I did not announce, who's here? So, that concludes our ceremony. So, congratulations to everyone, we're very proud of you.
We do have cupcakes to celebrate, so help yourself with water.
We'll recess for five to seven minutes to celebrate our scholars.
So each school still has accountability standards about. Question two does remove the 10th grade graduation requirement determination. So that is something that, again, I think looking at our local graduation requirements is important. I think for us in Northborough and Southborough, MCAST is a floor, not the ceiling. And, you know, again, we're not necessarily taking a position. So happy to answer any questions that people have about ballot question two.
Not hearing any questions in discussion. Thank you, Greg. Next item is a report of the Resolutions Committee.
So in this superintendent's memo, I did highlight the, summarize the resolutions. There are 10 resolutions that we discussed at the MASC, MASs conference. Of the 10, I did highlight the resolutions that I think are important to take a position on. And again, those are included in your packet, and I'm happy to speak to any of the 10 resolutions.
So I guess my question for the committee would be, are we interested in taking a stance on the, on either the highlighted items that are listed in the superintendent's memo? Or any individual one, or not at all? I think, I don't think in the past, we've actually really taken any action on these. But I think we could certainly entertain any ideas or motions. Kathy?
I'm interested in the influence of the resolutions in the State House. I presume that's really the targeted audience.
Yeah, so I think resolutions take quite ti- some time to be able to actually be impacted and, you know, be implemented. So I think the first step in the process is the MASC, MASs convening the MASC delegation and hearing input and feedback from school committees across the Commonwealth. That really focuses the 10 resolutions on advocacy and how to move those forward at the legislative level. Thank you.
I did have a question on number five, aligning tax authority with required local contribution. I'm not sure I get what that means. I mean, the required local contribution is going to vary town to town, right?
So the, the local contribution is, does vary and is based on each town's ability to pay. I think that the proposition two and a half, the cap is 2.5%. So allowing for town some flexibility when the budgets are over the 2.5% cap, be able to increase that.
But that's, that's part I don't get, increasing to what? Because, I mean, the local contribution is a dollar number, isn't it, not a percentage?
It is.
So I guess my question is, has, has this been the experience of any other school districts? Because I don't think it is this one's where the state has actually increased the minimum local contribution to the point that it's exceeded a community's two and a, prop two and a half?
So there are communities that are at the minimum local contribution. So it has impacted prop two and a half. We are above net school spending, minimum local contribution significantly. So it does not impact currently our district. But for many communities and towns, it is, it is a barrier to really funding education in communities.
Yeah, I mean, I like the sound of it. I just don't get how it would work in practice.
So I think, again, we've not been minimum local contribution. So we, we receive well above net, minimum school spending from our towns. So it's never been an issue. So we're above that net. So it wouldn't really impact Northborough and Southborough.
Well, it could when the day comes that we need an override.
Well, it's two factors. It would be when we were only at the minimum local contribution the towns were giving us.
Okay.
So that if we were at that, only at that threshold, then we needed an override to fund that amount.
Pursuant to our question about ballot two, the discussion, I see that MASC is looking to dismantle MCAST testing. This is what they resolve for. But as I recall, having been to the conference, that these resolutions have been in the works for a number of years and they're moving forward. Is that correct? My recall that maybe this is not for this year, but this has been in the works? That they're looking for an alternative to MCAST testing?
Yeah, so I think resolution number one, regardless of what happens with ballot question two, has been an area of advocacy for MASs and MASC for a number of years.
I see.
And it really is about having a better graduation determination assessment and really doing that work.
I wonder to the degree that voters are aware of that.
And right now, there is no legislation in about question two. Talks about removing the requirement and leaving the graduation determination based on the local community. So you technically could have 350 different graduation requirements across the Commonwealth.
Any other questions or comments? Any opinions on the committee as to whether we want to take a stand on any of these issues?
As I remember, I remember Kathleen Polichko has gone to this a number of times. And she said they tend to change on floors. So it's kind of pointless almost to take a position, you know? Just my opinion anyway.
I appreciate that. I'm not hearing anything, then I'm going to pass over those. We're not going to make a motion on any of those issues. So moving on to the next item agenda, appoint MASC voting delegate to the annual business meeting. Is anybody interested in attending to be a voting delegate at the annual business meeting of the MASC?
I think I, I looked at the schedule. If I'm reading it right, it's on Friday, like Friday afternoon is the actual.
3:15.
Voting happens, but, you know, I think I could swing that. I can't make the meeting, a little three-day meeting, but, you know.
All right, so I hear that as Paul's interested in being the voting delegate. Is anybody else interested?
Can't get that.
All right, not hearing any other interest. Do we, we don't need to vote on that, correct?
I'm probably voting.
We should vote. All right, then I make a motion that Paul Desmond be our 2024 voting delegate to the MASC annual business meeting.
Second.
Second by Sean. All right, any discussion? All right, well, the roll call vote, Kathleen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I, Chris, I'm a yes. Congratulations and thank you very much. All right.
I'll mention it.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the transportation bid.
So I'll turn it over to Becky, who will provide an update on the transportation bid.
Sure, so Keith and I have been working to put together an invitation for bids. This is our fifth year of our contract with NRT. We, if you recall, we did engage in a contract with them for three years initially, with two option years that we did invoke over the past two years. And so this year is the final year that we're able to use that contract. We have been doing a lot of work, looking at other districts' bid documents. There are a number of communities in the area who are also going out for bid. I think we have Framingham, Marlboro, Neshoba, Auburn, and Westboro, I believe. And I'm not sure, I think Berlin, Boyton may be as well. So there are a number of other communities who are going out to bid right now. So we are trying to get that bid out within the next few weeks so that we can really start that process and we'll have a better idea as to what our transportation costs will look like for FY '26. I will say, right now, our daily rate for transportation is 375 per bus. And we are here, other communities are in the $500 per day range. So we're looking at about a 33% potential increase. However, given the competition, we're hopeful that maybe we'll have some luck and it will not be as high as those numbers are indicating right now. Anything that you want to add?
No, and the, the other thing that we really focused on is the content of the IFB to make sure it is particular about the things that we have as our expectations and also an opportunity and a clear path for if there are any types of infractions. Those are built right into the document that we've created. So those are why we did look at a variety of, of different bid documents. We took some from our prior bid that was pretty, pretty solid and then have added to that. So it feels like it's been a good evolution from where we were in 2020 to what this will be in '25, '26.
Any questions or discussion? All right, thank you.
Oh, Joan?
Thank you. Is this, I, again, they write up here, you say for contract for '25, '26. Is this a one-year contract or a three-year contract?
It'll likely be, it'll be a, a three-year contract. And that three-year contract would have the ability to be extended for one year at a time, for a total of five years total, just what we just are now finishing up with NRT. So it will have that potential.
Okay, that's really good news. Thank you, thank you for Becky and to Keith for all your hard work on this. Thank you.
Pleasure.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Next is the superintendent's report to the committee.
So first is the principal's report, so Principal Beth.
All right, well, Paul, we'll be jacking you here.
Yep, there you go.
Great, thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
You're welcome.
So as we always do, we're going to kick off our principal's report by hearing from our student representative, Emily Sinclair, Amelia.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So we're going to start off with meeting the student advisory committee. So this year, I'm the chair, and then I'm joined by Madison Wilson, who is our alternate chair. So if I'm unable to make it to a meeting, she will be here in my place. And Sarah Leonard, Maddie Nikosia, and Maggie Fitzgerald are the other members of the committee. So we came up with three main goals for the year. We want to work with administration on finalizing an AI policy for students. We want to improve student involvement in policy work. And we also want to begin middle school outreach so that they know what student government opportunities are available for them to pursue once they reach high school. And then some past and upcoming events. So the Algonquin Writing Center had their brainstorming workshop on October 1st, where students were able to come in and help, get some tutor help to come up with their ideas for their college essay. And then they had their college essay drafting night, which took place, actually, last night. And so they worked with tutors to get feedback on their writing. And then the DECA Car Wash was October 5th. Changemakers for Good Presentation for ADL happened on October 7th. And that's where ADL students get trained a little bit on, like, how to be more inclusive, how to present to classes, and all that kind of stuff. And then the Satcham Coffee House is tomorrow night. And then the Pink Out Home Football Game and Spirit Day was October 11th, where students were, were encouraged to wear pink to the game and to school. And the senior class sold shirts to raise awareness for breast cancer. And then the Chorus Concert is coming up on October 22nd, and the Orchestra Concert is coming up on the 30th. And that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't have a lot to share except for the strategic plan, which is a big one. But I do want to remark that I think under Amelia's leadership and the senior classes' leadership, we just are up to a real good start. We're about a, you know, largely on our way to the end of quarter one, and we're up to a good start. It's been a good school year and I'm really enjoying working with this senior group. I think specifically what we're seeing is with the athletic complex being open for Friday night football games, the school spirit is anecdotally kind of higher than it's been in, in some time. And that's been a real, really enjoyable way to kick off the year. So, so tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to be overviewing our school improvement plan and how it fits into our other, our work around the district. So as you know, we are not just our own school, our own island here. We are part of the, the 10 schools, three districts, one community, learners that comprise the public schools in Northborough and Southborough. And the strategic plan that I'll be presenting, the school improvement plan that I'll be presenting, really is built on the, the architecture of the, of all these schools in the 10 school group here. And those leaders, and under Greg's leadership, we have continued to, to kind of pull ours in the same direction to make sure we're making progress on all the key, high-leverage areas that we need to work on. You've seen this image many times before, but I always like to orient a lot of our work back to it. It's our portrait of a graduate. I will note that most schools would just really, they'd be very pleased to have a document as comprehensive and thorough and well-designed as this one, and also kind of cool-looking, by the way. When I go to NIASC events and they, this is a real focus on NIASC, when they're seeking to encourage schools to improve, they really orient them around, what is your end product designed to, to be? And think of that, and we've had that established. And I had the great fortune of, when I became the principal, of inheriting this really great document that orients us around the priorities for the district and for our work every day here at the high school, but also at Trotter and Amalkan and at the elementary schools as well. So our strategic objectives unfold, as you've seen these, these icons before, in five different domains. And this year, we are in the reauthorization phase. So in the six-year sequence, or the six-year vision process, we are in the, kind of the second of the two, three-year processes. So we are kicking that off and we are focusing, this is a lot on the right-hand side here. We're focusing on the three big buckets here, these three big categories that we're going to, you're going to hear a lot about tonight, and that really, not surprisingly, comprise the very, the lion's share of our work every day because they are the most student-facing and the student, most student-centered work. And those are empowering learners, equity of opportunity, and healthy and balanced learners. So not to diminish the importance of the other, the other two, that's work we also do, but the most student-facing, student-centered work is what shows up in those big three categories. So before we get into that work, I'm just going to give you a bit of a brief overview to remind you, if you, if you're not aware, but to give you a bit of a starter set of the knowledge about what, you know, what's, what our school looks like. So our school enrollment is, is roughly 1,200. I checked it today, it was 1,195. We've been hovering, hovering around that number for the last two years. We anticipate that'll go up a little bit in the next few years. That number at about 1,200 has been the lowest in our school's history in some time. And then it's going to, and that reflects just broader population trends in the state and in the country. Our schools has been as big as 1,450 students, we're at about 1,200 now, like I said. And then that number will climb. So you can see, it's a pretty even distribution of our grades, grade nine, 10, 11, and 12. And that grade 13, that's our, our group of students who stay with us and proceed toward, they proceed with their graduate, their education until they turn 22. You can see that we are an increasingly diverse school. So that pie chart would not have been the same five or 10 or 15 years ago. As a teacher here, we were just not as diverse a school as we are, and that's something we're really proud of. And I think that we meet, that needs of all of our students quite well. Just to give you an idea, our percentage of students, students with disabilities is 15.9%. That's relative, that's pretty close to what you would see in other areas in, in the Commonwealth. Our percentage of students who are on 504, as you see it there, it's roughly, it's very close to the same. And then we meet the needs, of course, of all of our students, our EL students. We have 11 EL students and 37 former EL, EL students. So we're a diverse school that meets the needs of all of our students where they are and, and provide what they need to be successful. Primarily, our students go on to, go on to college, but we do our best and I think we are constantly finding ways to meet the needs of students who, for whom that's not the, the outcome they're seeking. So just a few words about our school improvement plan. It was shaped by our administrative team, that's myself, our three assistant principals, and the career exploration and innovation leader, Michelle Kalin, as well. I, we worked closely with the school, the school-based leadership team. Those are almost all of the people in that group, except for the administrators are department heads. So those are people who come to this meeting and present, you know, every other month or so. Next month, we'll be hearing from me and Collins from the kind of performing arts. So they all contributed to what, the areas that we're going to be focusing on in a moment. And then also, I would take in, of course, feedback from our school council, which, which includes parents and students and some community members as well. So that's been a wonderful group that we always enjoy seeing monthly. All of our priorities are aligned with the district priorities. So you'll see that in some of the future slides, which is that our priorities are the district priorities and vice versa. We're the biggest school in the district by, by far, so that's not surprising. But also, I, I will add, having been in another district, the amount of kind of vertical uniformity and vertical alignment between what we prioritize here at the high school and the work that's being completed with great integrity at the middle school and at the elementary schools is very, it's not in lockstep, but it certainly is reflective of really kind of an architecture that runs down through all of those levels. And it's really quite impressive. Here, I just, just kind of pulled out some of the areas, the focus that we are, that you'll see weaving through some of the, the future slides coming up. Under my leadership, I really like to prioritize data decision, data-driven decision-making. We have the luxury of having access to data, data tools that never even, never existed and probably would have been hard to fathom years, years ago. And here we have them, and that's made our work easier to do well, I would say. We are grappling with artificial intelligence, both its, its challenges, but also seeing some of the benefits it might provide. And another area that we're really looking for is, to, to, that's going to be a high priority for us this year and already has been, is, is creating a more uniform experience for our students through the process of curriculum mapping. So the, here's two of the big goals that fall under that empowering all learners area. And I'm going to, and in future slides, I'll do the same, which is to highlight some of the keywords that I, you know, maybe jump out to, is that we're looking to identify and implement high-quality instructional resources, curricula, practices that engage all learners with a high degree of fidelity. So high-quality instructional practices is a phrase we use in the building a lot. It goes many years back in our district and is something we believe in with great integrity, I think, in this building. Another goal is to develop and implement and refine practices for engaging educators in collaborative learning communities and examine data effectively. I won't read all the rest of that, but we do, again, rely and lean on, on data pretty closely and pretty heavily. And our goals do reflect that. So this is where the, the real action happens. So that's why I'm going to slow down here a little bit and talk about some of the actions we're taking here in the building and have already been taking to, to pursue and make progress on those goals. So the first one here, under empowering learners, which you have that language there, our, our, the initiative is to investigate and select a standardized curriculum formatting option to ensure comprehensiveness, continuity, and alignment. That does build on work that already preexists. So we did a lot of work under Atlas, using a program called Atlas years ago. But we've not sustained that work and maintained that as a platform. And so we need to come back to that to ensure that there's a uniform way our curriculum is housed, it's represented, it's recorded for teachers to rely on year to year. But it's also recorded and communicated to families in a way that is, makes sense and is digestible and understandable. Key personnel committed to this work are our departments. All members of all departments are involved in this work in some way. Our department heads are very closely working on this work. And that's our SPLT numbers, like I said, and our admin team. And Dr. Reinborn has helped us with some of this work so far. So this is the kind of task that, if you're familiar with that Eisenhower matrix, it's the kind of test that is important, but we're doing slowly. And we're not, our goal is that by the end of the spring, when NIASC comes, comes for a visit, we, we're doing this because it's important work to do, but it will also provide a reportable for when NIASC, our NIAS decennial review comes through. So this was an area of weakness identified by that collaborative conference two years ago, 18 months ago. And this will provide work that's necessary, but also work that we can report out. Additionally, we have already begun the work of and done a pretty deep dive training on Analytic View, it's a data processing and synthesizing platform that's incredibly powerful. Again, another tool that I couldn't have fathomed its existence 10 years ago, and here it's at our fingertips. So the ability for myself as the school principal to have access to really deep pools of data and also synthesize in a way that makes, makes sense to me is very exciting. But now we have that for teachers as well. So here I have that under that bullet. Last year, I had access to it, but it was a little wonky and didn't have all the same features it has now. Its accessibility wasn't as, as strong. This year, now we have access to it, my teachers have access to it, it's very robust and, and works really well. So our key personnel working on this, again, all staff spent time at the beginning of the year unpacking data through this platform, which gave them a real, not a glimpse, but a real detailed, granular view, as granular as they would have liked, into their students and what their needs are and what their successes are and what their challenges are. Also, a global view of what our school, what our, our students' performance looks like, what their attendance looks like, what their, their demographics looks like. Those charts I pulled earlier, just like grabbed them off of Analytic View, that's an easy one. But you can do everything from attendance to achievement, to MCAST, to SAT, you name it. We can crosscut it every different way. It's, it's really pretty, pretty wonderful. And cheers to our IT team for bringing that to us and for Dr. Reinborn for spearheading that work. It's been a very powerful tool. Two on this slide, two areas that we're focusing under the empowering all learners is, is to develop and implement a policy or possibly multiple policy options regarding AI. Of course, that's artificial intelligence, that is a topic nobody was really talking about two years ago. A year ago, a lot of people were talking about it, and now it's something that is really dominating all conversations around the world of education. So schools are scrambling to, to catch up and make sure we have some policies in place that guide what students can do for the use of AI, but also guard against the misuse of AI. This has been in the news quite a bit. This week, Hingham was in the news for this exact issue. So we want to avoid that kind of thing, but really, our larger goal is to not just avoid trouble, but to train our students in proper and appropriate use so that the work they complete is their own work. We are doing a staff training on next Friday. We are going to be starting with kind of a starter set of information to bring all of our staff up to the same level of understanding about AI. And then there'll be breakouts to, for teachers to explore areas of AI or topics on AI that interest them, everything from like nuts and bolts, new tools that they might be becoming aware of, or more, more philosophical discussions about what AI could do for the work they do every day. So for example, the idea of teaching writing right now is being, is, this is really going to challenge how writing is taught, how it's graded. These are things my teachers are, our teachers are really grappling with. There's a lot to be excited about, there's a lot to be worried about as well. So we're, we're tackling that tension next week. We've already reported a little bit on this, and that photo on the right-hand side are two of our summer intern students. Those are two young men who worked at Firefly Coders over the summer. They had a summer internship where they taught classes to younger students as part of our first-ever summer internship cohort. We had four students do that. We're looking at many more than that already expressing interest in that for the summer. And so those would, their experience would, would fall under this action here, which is to enhance students' career, awareness of diverse careers and create opportunities for them to experience these careers firsthand in workplace settings. So we have 10 students already signed up for spring internships. It's really the first summer doing this because it's happening during our regular school day and with our, our rotating schedule, it's not very kind to that kind of approach. And it's going to require a little bit of innovative thinking that we already achieved and we're excited about. And we're going to see how our students respond to this. We're really, really excited about what that could look like. As well, we're looking at having a full class program for our whole junior class to almost have. If you're familiar, you might remember I spearheaded, spearheaded a program with the Marlboro Chamber of Commerce last year and the previous year to have students do kind of a carousel-style activity where they met industry professionals. That impacted 25 or 30 of our kids. We're going to bring an identical program right here to our school and maybe have our whole junior class do that exact same event here in our building during the school day. So we're, it's something that Michelle Kalin is working hard at, and we're earning out some details about. That's, the target for that is March. Under our equity of opportunity goal, we are aiming to always maintain and enhance inclusive classroom communities and school environments characterized by equitable access to learning for every student, regardless of background or ability, and strive to address their diverse individual needs effectively. I think that's something we do well. We are really kind of a, a model program for a lot of our special education programs. Some of the ones that draw a lot of the attention are what you see here, which is our Titan Games and our other, our other inclusivity programs like Best Buddies and, you know... our other, our other inclusivity programs like Best Buddies and Unified Athletics, although it's not the only ones that we have, of course. The big area that we're working on here is one that we've been working on for two years and we're going into year three of this work is to continue the work of examining our students' common mid-year and final assessments to see where gaps exist and see, um, how we can close those gaps. So that's work that I think probably will continue to happen for a very long time because that work will just never be, uh, not be relevant or pertinent. Um, so in the middle of the year, for about six weeks, our, our teachers really work closely in their departments to look at our mid-year data and to see where they can make changes between the middle of the year and the end of the year to close the gaps that we see emerging by that time. And then lastly, under healthy and balanced learners, this is an area, um, where we create and utilize structured and organized methods for integrating health and wellness consistently within and across all educational settings. So, um, under that, we really have two area, two, two big actions. And the first one, I think probably outweighs the second one. The first one is to implement the revised state health curriculum standards. When that says in process, that's a huge undertaking. Mary Ellen Duggan has been hugely influential in that work. Um, Assistant Principal Andy McGowan is, is, uh, spearheading that work as well. But, uh, those standards have not been updated, I think, in 30 years. So shifting to those is a big change. I will say however, it's not as though we were teaching physical education and health in the same way as we were 30 years ago, but we are not teaching it in the same way we will next year or the year after. So we have work to do. Um, I'm very proud of our PE and health teachers. They, um, come at physical education and health in a very forward-thinking, um, manner that a lot of schools would be very eager to steal from. Um, and so shifting to the new standards, I think, will be an exciting opportunity, but also not a massive, massive sea change. Work we did over the summer and will continue to do that Mary Ellen and I've been doing is to examine our Metro West Atlas and Health Survey findings and then find a new kind of, uh, a, a way to consolidate those findings in a way that's digestible and, and communicated to the communities, uh, of North, North, South Borough in a, in a routine and predictable kind of way. All right. And then I, I collapsed the, the following four actions and there's two up here and there's two that are gonna show up in a moment. Um, as ongoing, they're not, not that they're, uh, they're much lesser than, but these are things that we continue to do and, uh, have not consumed as much bandwidth as some of the others. One is to continue the work, um, of universal design for learning, which is, uh, an educational kind of philosophy that many, many of my teachers, of our teachers have undertaken and been trained on in the last few years and are doing regularly. So we're, we're very proud of, um, of all the schools in the district. Ours was the one where, ours was one where we had a lot of teachers doing a lot of this work very, adopting it very quickly. Um, so that work will continue. Um, and that's part of empowering learners, which I have in parentheses there. Um, as well, we're looking to expand on and refine mechanisms to empower students of underrepresented, of underrepresented populations to address school issues. So that's where Kathy Carminiani initialized, uh, at the beginning of last year and, um, and has continued in giving voice to our students who sometimes don't have a voice. It's been important work. We've seen gains on, but in a school where, um, you do not have as much diversity as many other schools, that's a really critical, um, tool for those young people. And then finally, uh, new this year, there are two up here is to, uh, kind of a smaller goal that, that is more a goal that I'm working on with my department heads is to create a, an improved version of peer observation. So peer observation is exactly what it sounds like, but it, it is newly in the last couple of years, a focus of our, our evaluation process. So creating some structures to make sure that, uh, that that, that is a process that's being done with integrity and that is advancing teachers', um, practice is important and something we're gonna be focusing on, um, beginning next week. We haven't really done a whole lot with that yet, but, uh, um, that's work we're gonna be getting next week. I'm really eager to see and to encourage our teachers to get off their hallway. So for teachers, for those of you who don't know, I think you probably all do know, the corridors are primarily designed, um, by departments. So our English teachers all just kind of stay in one department. That's where they teach. They all have their own classrooms. They eat lunch there. They socialize with many of those folks and, and, um, it's just kind of where they, they find their home. Um, and we're really encouraging teachers to visit other classrooms off their hallway to see what instruction looks like in that classrooms for the English teacher or science classrooms for the Latin teacher. So, um, that's work that I'm excited about. And then finally, uh, to develop and refine a variety of student-driven events to reinforce school, uh, culture. So that's something we've been doing and that's mostly stuff I've been doing with our student council, with Amelia and others to boost school spirit. Um, along with, the school spirit often comes higher, uh, school attendance. So, um, this is an extension or a result of some of the, the analysis we did last year of, uh, student attendance. And, um, our data on student attendance looks like it's coming in, um, we're now six or seven weeks into school. It's looking like it's in good shape right now. So we're really excited about that. And so those, I'm sorry, you're drinking from a fire hose here. This was, uh, a lot of information, a lot of text, a lot of big ideas and big concepts, but those are the ways we're looking to improve our school this year and our school community. Anybody have any questions?
I was wondering, and you might've given an example, but if you could, on that, the ongoing, um, expand, uh, expand or refine on, uh, refine mechanisms, what, what are those mechanisms or what are some examples of mechanisms that you have to empower students?
So, um, what we were finding was that there just was not a real, um, a good way for students to express how they felt. We have a wonderful school newspaper that I think helps all students understand what's happening in our school. Um, and what Kathy Carminiani did, um, and that it still sustains itself is have, we have a student group that where students tackle, um, issues of, of equity directly. So that group was initially called, uh, Unity Beyond Differences. Now they've adopted a new name and they, they are working very hard on issues related directly to student equity and that group did not exist before. And last year we spent like, kind of figuring out, um, what was the mission and vision of that work? Um, and they've done some interesting things and this year they're starting to build on those things. So for example, a very concrete example of this is, um, the preschool, you're familiar, we have a Tiny Titans preschool. Um, there's a sticker on the outside of the preschool window that has a bunch of cartoon figures and they're all white, white figures. And, um, this group will be looking to reshape that space and make that actual visual representation of all the students who come into our building more representative of the students who were in there. And that's like just, I mean, just one example of the first things they're doing this year.
Any additional questions?
I had a question about the peer review, uh, observation process.
Yep.
And how do you envision that working in practice? Because it takes time, right?
Yeah.
You teach your, out of one classroom, put them in another?
Yeah. Um, so a lot of it is just on the, uh, teachers do it on, on their own. So, so I think without a lot of structure, teachers will just make those linkages together and they'll find a teacher who they hear is doing something they want to learn more about and they'll go and visit those teachers. I think what we found, and not surprisingly, without a lot of structure, teachers will go to where they're most comfortable and they might not, if you're an English teacher, even if you're in the building for five or 10 years, you might not know somebody way across the building who you see at a staff meeting once a month and might not be aware that they're doing something very exciting. So one of the things we, we've kind of joked about is creating some type of platform, not a literal digital platform, but almost like a dating app kind of sensibility where you identify what you're looking to improve on. And then we create a, a document or some way for you to see what other teachers are doing those things well. So you might want to learn more about how to use, um, you know, a certain platform or tool in your, in your classroom as an English teacher. You might come to find out that one of our chemistry teachers uses that regularly, but you wouldn't have known that without a little bit of an assist from the administration or the, your department heads. We're looking to create something where teachers self-identify what they'd like to work on and then we help them identify somebody who already does that well. That's, work's been happening organically forever, but we've not really scrutinized it and looking to do that.
I have a question on, um, AnalyticView. Um, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but Algonquin uses Naviance for, as guidance software, Power School, has used, uh, Canvas? So how does all that data get into AnalyticView? Is there actually an individual inputting all that data manually? Or is there, is that software, is there some kind of software integration?
This is a, it's a question. There's, there's nobody typing it all in.
Yes. So, um, this is part of why there were several years of kind of backwork and choosing the right platform before it was actually rolled out to teachers. Um, we have Julie Marshall, who is a data technology specialist. And then there's Judy Davies, who's a data specialist. And then Kathy Carminiani is Director of Instructional Technology and Science. They all have many responsibilities. Um, but I would say Judy, sorry, Julie and Kathy are probably the most involved in AnalyticView. Judy is very involved in Power School. So they're all very interconnected. We have automatic flow of data from Power School to AnalyticView and from several other, um, sort of data sources. And then there are a few things where Julie Marshall will send, you know, the data to AnalyticView to be uploaded periodically throughout the year. But there are many things that Power School syncs every night with AnalyticView. So our attendance data is coming from Power School directly into AnalyticView on a nightly basis. Our MCAS data is an example of data where we get the download, we send it to AnalyticView and then they put it in. Um, access data is similar. So there's a few different mechanisms, but it is most, a lot of it is highly automated.
And just to jump in, I can give you like, uh, what it looks like from the backend. I won't show you because it would show student data that's not appropriate, but, um, I have a data team that meets every week, a week and a half. And we're always looking at our seniors who are in, kind of at risk. And I'd always have a list literally written in my notepad on who we are keeping on. Now I have that list created as a cohort in that platform and I can go into that platform and just pull up that cohort and know those 12 or 15 seniors, what their attendance has been, what the grade just came in to look like. You know, any, any key data that could exist on a student in any one of our platforms now shows up and now we have it in a way that I don't have to go digging. All that data also existed last year, but I would've had to go kid to kid on each of one of their, you know, our school program, um, our school accounts to see. It's really exciting.
I can certainly see where it's beneficial from an administrative side because you can get hold views of individual students.
Yeah.
Have the teachers provided any feedback? So the teachers, now that they're able to access the information that's in there, have they provided any feedback in terms of the value of the information that's in there? Or is it really more of an administrative tool to give you kind of a, that allows you to, targeted isn't the right word, basically provide targeted interventions to specific students from an administrative side?
That's a great question. So our kickoff to the year was really honed around, built around this. I will say, I don't think teachers have had enough time to really tinker and to pour into like the features on this. Um, what we did was identify some of our, what our data tells us is gonna predictively let us know what kids are gonna need the most help from the previous. Uh, so students who transfer in, for example, our data tells us, um, if they transfer in after ninth grade, uh, or after the start of ninth grade, that's a, I don't wanna say red flag, but that, our, our data is very clear. Our signal is that we should be looking at that student, uh, to support them sooner than later if needed be. And teachers now have the ability, that's a, uh, transfer status is an area that they can sort by. So for example, every teacher can go in there, pull up all their roster of 95 or 100 kids they teach and sort by transfer status and they'd be able to see when the student entered our school. So for most students, as students, those are students who entered conventionally at the start of ninth grade, students who entered in 10th grade, you wouldn't know if you taught them in 11th grade, you wouldn't know they're new to our school community. And now they have that. And that's a really crucial piece of data that you never would've had.
I'll, I'll just give a couple of other practical things. I think for teachers, it's relatively new.
Yeah.
So we're still gonna be looking for feedback. Part of the reason we selected AnalyticView as, as our partner in this work is that there's a tremendous amount of customization that we can do with them. So we have, as we've gone through this process, been continually asking teachers, administrators, what's important for you to be able to see? What do you want to be able to do with it? It could be in the future that if we were saying we want to be able to do something with the common assessments, that that's something we'll want to start working in here. But there's some very practical things. Having Kathy Carminiani just out of the high school and just out of, you know, sort of that school-based position, a teacher can, she, she had these ideas of like, the things teachers often need to know right away. And so for example, like teachers, when they pull up and they see their class roster, there are certain buttons across the top. So they can see, um, L's, how many L's, uh, English learners they have, how many former English learners. If they click on the box, it tells them who they are. They can see who needs translation and interpretation. If they click on the box, it tells them the exact information. Which parent needs what language? Um, things as simple as no photos. People who have opted out of their students having photos, click on the box, it tells you exactly which students. So that we're not inadvertently publishing photos on Instagram. So, so there's certain things that Kathy's really taken the lead on getting some very like useful, quick things. And then I think our work now is to kind of go deeper to that level. And, you know, Sean's already working with the student assistance team, but how do we go deeper for the teachers now to say like, how do we use this to help inform, you know, the instructional practices and kind of how we meet the needs of all learners?
Thank you. I think it's great that there's a central repository for that information.
It's, I mean, you know.
As opposed to trying to find the person or find the people or find the software that does that. I think that's a great tool. So.
That's exciting.
Exciting, yeah.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
So, uh, completely supportive of the efforts and good to see it taking place. But so from a budget perspective, is that, is that a central office function that's shared across the three districts?
Yes.
Any other questions? Yeah, just, I guess a tech question, but I hadn't heard about Atlas for a while. So Atlas is separate from all that? It's just curriculum? Is that right?
It's separate from the AnalyticView, the student data. Um, yeah, it's, it doesn't, it has nothing to do with that. It's a, that's a repository for curriculum and, um, scope and sequence and other documents related to.
And essentially what happened with Atlas is the company really did not keep their software relevant, is the way I would put it. Like it was, you know, sort of you could put your curriculum maps in there, but it wasn't, it, it wasn't sort of really serving a purpose beyond what a Google Drive could serve in terms of the, um, storage. So we are sort of moving beyond that at this point and saying, how do we, um, sort of map our curriculum and sort of track that? And that's some of the work Sean is mentioning in terms of the NIES work.
Oh, we're still using Atlas to do that?
We are not using Atlas to do that. We are doing that outside of Atlas at this point.
A follow-up to that. Are we still paying for Atlas or?
We are not paying for it.
Do we have access to all the data that was put into Atlas?
We did get all of the data that was put into Atlas. We had, that was our last payment to that, was to get all the data.
Any additional questions? Now, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Sloman Superintendent's Report for enrollments?
Sure. So your packet is enrollment report as of September 16th. And the October 1, um, enrollment number is 1,195. When we look at NSDAQ, NSDAQ was projecting 1,186. So maybe few students more than NSDAQ projections. Um, and in FY '26, NSDAQ's projecting, um, a little over 1,200 students. And then also to Sean's point earlier in his presentation, he mentioned the 10-year outlook. So in 2033, 34, it's like a long way out, um, we'll reach a peak of about 1,350 at the high school in terms of.
Do they have to split by town on that?
No.
That 10-year outlook, like?
They do.
Yeah.
But it's fairly, it's fairly even. So the proportions are pretty stable.
Okay.
Do you know offhand, like, what's the most we've ever had?
Um, I think, I think Sean, what you had mentioned was like 14, 26, you know, 50. I don't think we've ever crested to 1,500.
All right. FY '25 budget line item transfers?
I will turn it over to Becky for the budget reports.
So I'm actually going to combine the line item transfers and the monthly general fund report because they are so interrelated. Um, first to talk about the monthly general fund report. Um, this report does reflect the first quarter of fiscal year 2025. Um, and year to date, we have expended $5.1 million. Um, we also have encumbrances that total $21.9 million. And as I had reported And as I had reported to the committee last month, that figure mainly represents those salaries that we anticipate paying throughout the course of the year, as well as some of our contractual obligations for our health insurance and those sorts of things. The ending balance, as of September 30th, was 854,000 or 3.06%. We are slightly lower than where we were at this time last year. We had 1.3 million last year and a 5.15% budget remaining. I will say though, that the financial team, like we've really been looking at the regional report, I'd say on a weekly basis, we're going through it, we're checking our encumbrances, and I really feel confident that this budget is reflective of where we anticipate our expenses to be for this upcoming year. We are continuing to work on that heating cost. Our rates are about to go down as of the end of this month, so I'm hoping that once we have a few, I'd say invoices under that new rate, that we'll have a better sense for where we will look for our heating. In terms of the function codes that are over expended, I did provide the committee with a report of those five function codes that are new from last year. The first line is for custodial salaries, and just to give a little bit of a background, like our transportation contract, we were actually in the final year of our contract with, for our vendor for custodial services here at the high school. It was a three-year contract, and this was the final year. Unfortunately, on July 2nd, I received an email from that company stating that they were going to be going out of business as of August 3rd. So we needed to produce a procurement and find a new company pretty quickly over the summer, so that we would have those services in place by the end of August. We're pleased with the company that we have selected. So far, they've been working out great. However, it did come at a, an increased cost to the contract than what we had anticipated based on what we had signed two years ago with the other company. So that overage is reflective of this new contract amount. The other line item?
Sorry?
Oh, yes.
I thought we had our own.
We share. We, we do have our own custodians for each of the shifts, but it's supplemented with outside services to help complete the cleaning on a daily basis.
We actually do that throughout all three districts where we have some supplemental services.
Not in every school, but in all three districts.
And it does help the custodians that are employed by the district to get to some of those projects that need to be done versus worrying about the cleaning of the classrooms and the bathrooms at night.
So the contracting company is, because it's overflow, or is, why, why wouldn't you want to insource all of it, or what's the rationale of having the act?
It's a nice balance between having our own people that are employees of the district combined with the outside service. So one of the, one of the benefits that comes up is that if someone is not available to work, if they're sick or if they're on a medical leave of some type, the company is obligated to provide a substitute so we don't miss a beat. If they were all our, our employees and we were dealing with vacation time and sick time and things like this, things might suffer from time to time, especially with a large building like this. That's just one example. The other, the other example is that, you know, when you're looking at the complete costs, especially with, with, with benefits, having the balance between both really makes it a cost-effective way of doing it.
I would say the other piece to that is, in this contract, we also included, so if we had any additional cleaning needs that, you know, where we needed to bring in some, you know, a few more hands to do the work, that we are able to contract with them to bring them in on a temporary basis to help us out.
And we do that during the summer, as an example, so we can make things ready for the start of ESY or for just the start of the school year, depending on the ebb and flow of the summer, as one place where that is used.
And the building is 350,000 square feet. It is a very large building. Our current custodial crew could not keep up with the just the day-to-day maintenance, cleaning of the building. It's supplemented through contracted services. That has been historic. We have had that model for the past, I think, eight to 10 years.
Probably 10 years, yeah.
And it has served us well. And again, I think we've had, had great success just making sure our bathrooms are clean every day, our bathrooms are clean, the floors are vacuumed for when kids arrive, the teachers arrive every day.
And that's more cost-effective than expanding our own custodial staff?
Correct.
So continuing on with that report, so the next line that is over are separation costs. Those costs are ones that we budget every year. We try to look at people who have indicated to us that they may be retiring in the upcoming school year, and so we budget in any of those contractual obligations, whether it be an early retirement incentive or six-day buyback, whatever they might be eligible for. We did have one person who was not on our radar, who has submitted their retirement, and so that is driving this overage. I will say it's over right now. However, we do have some, as I said, potential retirements budgeted in this line that have not submitted retirement paperwork, so it is very possible that this line may not be over budget at the end of the year. But as of right now, based on our predictions, we are predicting an over, an overage. The next two lines are over because funds are budgeted in different accounts for these two things. One of them, you can see there are therapy services, and it is for a student that we had anticipated some out-of-district costs for. However, we are now providing some other services, some home-based services for that student. And so the money is actually in another account and would need to be moved into that account. And then finally, the, the last one is for special education transportation, and that is for a staff member who is traveling to an off-site program to assist one of our students. And so this would be reimbursing that person for the cost of their travel to the program. There are also two function codes that I had listed separately that on your report are showing as over expended, and I just wanted to highlight it because I didn't want you to wonder why I wasn't reporting on that since they are new. Those are, there are two reasons for that. One is unfortunately, one of the expenses was entered into the wrong account code, and as we were reviewing this account, that's when we noticed that, and so we have done a journal entry to make that correction. So it is in the correct account now. And then the second is a timing issue, and that is due to when the payroll is being processed. At the beginning of each fiscal year, Elena Daco, who is our regional financial coordinator, enters encumbrances in for like our substitute line items or any of like the payroll taxes and those sorts of things, so that we have that money set aside and we know that we are going to be utilizing that. Once she finalizes her payroll, she will then go in and she will make an adjustment to those lines as applicable. Unfortunately, because the report was generated on September 30th in the middle of her processing our October 10th payroll, she was not done with her payroll, so she could not make that adjustment. But now that has been corrected, and so the line is no longer showing at an overage. But again, just wanted to point that out to the committee. So at this point in time, I welcome any other questions on those two reports.
Does anybody have any questions on that?
Just a comment, just to see if you agree. So just given the dialogue around the custodial services, fair to say that the staff personnel's about 80% of the cost, and contracted services is about 20%? Looks like a total budget of 700,000, contracted services about 150,000.
Probably in terms of like a financial perspective, are you talking about from a personnel perspective, like the numbers that we have?
Financial.
So the other piece I would add, Matt too, is I'm not sure all of the healthcare are captured in that line item either.
Healthcare is a separate line item.
Correct, so it's also.
Overall staff.
Those employees.
Yes, just the salary.
Just the salary. I'm not hearing any further discussion. I will entertain a motion to approve until audited the FY '25 budget line item transfers and the FY '25 monthly general fund expenditure reports.
Move?
Moved by Paul.
Second.
Second by Matt. Any additional discussion? All right, we'll have a roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes!
And IMES, it is unanimously approved. Thank you. On to FY '26 budget priorities.
So in your pack, actually we have a statement of revenue.
I'm sorry, a statement of revenue, I apologize.
So there really hasn't been much of a change, I would say, in the revenue report from last month. We have received our Chapter 70 and our charter school state payments. As I mentioned last month, our investment income continues to be healthy. Also during the month of September, we continue to collect our athletic fees for the fall sports. I think the one big item that really is a difference from the August report are the student parking fees. You can see that those have been collected for the school year. But overall, we're a quarter into the fiscal year, and we've received 24% of our projected revenues for the year. So I think that we are on track with our revenue projections. And again, down at the bottom of that report also shows our certified END amount, and that was certified as of September 9th, 2024.
All right, any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the FY '25 statement of revenue until audited.
Move?
Moved by Paul?
Second.
Second by Matt. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes!
And IMES, the motion unanimously passes. Thank you. All right, now on to the FY '26 budget priorities.
So in your packet is the FY '26 budget priorities, and if they look familiar, that is because they are the FY '25 budget priorities rolled up into FY '26. So the regional operational budget subcommittee did meet last night with the purpose of really thinking about what the priorities are for FY '26. I'm not sure if our subcommittees would want to share the discourse and conversation.
I would say that the, the conversation, Mr. Spencer, would you like to share any of your mind? Yeah, so conversation was, a lot of it was around formatting, formatting and structure of what these priorities should look like, and what should be included as like standout priorities versus things we should just be doing anyway as good management. And I think ultimately, the way we left it was that this was something to consider going forward, but not that we would actually change, change the fundamental intent of what is in that document. But would you please feel free to add?
No, I think that's a, it's a fair assessment. We found ourselves last evening focusing on where the items in bold, which was last year, a number of items that we intended to provide specificity around some of the, maybe a position that we were focused on, an example of the special education team chairperson, that we wanted to prioritize that in the budget. And/or the last line item around developing a sustainable contribution to the OPEB liability, because that's something that we've discussed at some length, and trying to provide that specificity so that, you know, when we went through the budget process, they would either be addressed or considered amongst other things. And so we got into a little bit of a dialogue around where something hadn't been met, whether it be last year or even in a prior year, is, you know, is it really a priority if we're not addressing it? And so beyond the kind of the point of like the, the top section, which is pretty much table stakes for, I think, what we believe is a high-performing district, is maybe distinguishing in the priorities, those things that we set as core tenets or, or standards, and those that we, you know, as a committee want to prioritize. Part of the ask of the committee was for the administration and the team to come forward and say, okay, these are the things that we would like to prioritize that are responsive to the, you know, the strategic plan. And then other items where, you know, as the subcommittee members and then even all of us can say, is there anything that you think we should be prioritizing, what can added as part of like the finalizing the budget priorities? As an example, last evening, I mentioned some of the dialogue that we had at our workshop around, you know, as, as a district or collectively as a combined district, should we be focusing on communication efforts so that we're properly communicating both to, you know, our students, the families, but then the community at large as to what we are doing as a school district to serve, you know, the taxpayers themselves, but our network. So that was, you know, some of the way that we discussed it last night. Anyone else wants to add?
I think that was, that was a far better assessment than mine. I know we were talking about, one of the suggestions that was made was, like for example, related to the OPEB more specifically, was removing that as a budget priority because it isn't, doesn't directly, and OPEB doesn't really directly impact student learning. So these are really focusing on aspects that directly related to the students' interactions and students and family interactions with the students. I think that was part of it.
And maybe the last thing I would add, and this comes from a conversation I had with Greg today after that meeting, is maybe, and this maybe is for something for us all to consider across the, all the different subcommittees. It was a question of last night, was, was last night a working meeting or was it a meeting to get approval to come here and say, these are our budget priorities and get, you know, consensus among, amongst this group? And so what struck us is, is we don't have designated chairs for, for subcommittees. And maybe the question I ask is whether or not, it doesn't necessarily need to be for all, but should we consider for certain subcommittees of substance? I would say, you know, budget, operational, and any of the capital spending or maybe the policies might warrant the election of a chair. And the benefits of that is what we see in this meeting is a construct of our chair spending time with Greg, pride of the name, formulating what do we want to accomplish in this meeting? And having that same structure at the subcommittee level for a certain room probably would be a benefit so that when we get into the meeting, it's clear what's the priority and objective for the meeting. And I think, you know, so that's probably why last night we got into a little bit of a, kind of a healthy dialogue around what are we, what are we trying to do? And we didn't modify the document at all as to what we're talking about here. So something for consideration.
So we did leave with action items.
Yeah.
So Becky and I did get a good sense of how to create a draft of that FY '26 budget priorities. That is what we're working on now. We will reconvene the operational budget subcommittee to present a draft for continued conversation. And the plan is to bring the budget priorities for committee discussion next November maybe.
I'll take a comment on the last thing you said, Matt. I think it is a good idea to have a chair for, you know, these bigger subcommittees like capital and operational at least. And I thought we used to, but I guess it kind of went by the wayside, but, and I love that idea of, you know, having a chair and having a plan coming to meeting goals, what you want to get out of it. I'm sure it'll be a more productive meeting if we do that, so I'd be all for that. I would be, there's actually, we actually have the subcommittee in liaison, assignments as old business. I would be, you know, if, if it's the will of the committee, I'd be willing to entertain a motion to make that policy for the standing committees, which would be the audit subcommittee, the capital planning subcommittee, operational budget subcommittee, payroll and warrants subcommittee, and the policy development subcommittee. I would be willing to entertain a motion or at least a brief discussion about asking those committees to elect chairs.
Are there any of those committees, I'm thinking policy one, we often meet with the other two committees. So how would that affect?
So I think we should, the other committee should entertain a similar model.
Yeah.
And then we can rotate, when it's a joint policy subcommittee meeting, for example, we can rotate through chairs. So if we have a chair of the regional policy subcommittee, and then that chair will take one-third of the joint policy subcommittee. So if we have a chair of the Regional Policy Subcommittee, and then that chair will take one-third of the joint policy subcommittee.
Is this something we should take up now or are we more at a combined? What would be most effective?
I mean, I guess I have two thoughts that I don't mind sharing, because I think it is a great idea. We could ask the policy subcommittee to come up with a policy for that. Or we can just vote and just ask those committees here at this meeting to elect a chair. And it's just strictly for organizational purposes. I don't, I don't see a need to develop a policy as to what the function of the chair is. It would just be what the function of the chair for any meeting is.
Yes.
So I'd be willing to entertain further discussion on it. I think it merits discussion or vote.
So I'm supportive of the subcommittees electing a chair. The only other alternative I can come up with would be for this, the committee at large to vote. But I think generally we find ourselves supportive of the subcommittees anyway, so I like the way you're offering the alternative.
So I have a question. You and I talked about this afterwards, and I don't necessarily think that we settled on getting a chair for it. I guess my, my observation was in my first operational subcommittee meeting, was that it was less of a committee meeting but more of a working group. And so that was my observation. So is your, is your supposition that the chair does all the work and prepares it for the subcommittee?
My supposition would be the chair organizes with superintendent or other administrator what the topics will be and what the intention of the meeting is. And so not, not to have it as a working group, but to have it as a, as a committee to report back to the full committee. That's, that would be my intention, or how I would envision it, yes.
So would that create more meetings and administrative work for you?
So I think it would, from a central office perspective, it would make the meeting time more efficient because I could have conversations with the chair of each committee and say, what do we hope to accomplish? And what's the best structure to accomplish that goal? It could be that, you know, it's a working session, but with structure. So we're using our time wisely.
I would suggest, sorry, want to take?
No, no.
I would suggest that, that if they're going to go to the policy, that it would be helpful for the responsibilities of the chair to be noted in that it is, there's a preview, there's the meeting, and then there's some sort of review after that, just to ensure that, that is consistent across the subcommittees.
Joan?
Yes, thank you. I know that also another role that Chair of several years in the past was that Greg and administrative staff would then know who was being in control, if not in control, but who was leading that charge of that meeting. So as soon as we got together, there was three or four of us on the capital planning or operational, we knew who was going to be the chair and who was, who was going to be leading the discussion, taking the votes if they were necessary. And then also who was going to be taking the minutes. It was more of an organizational thing which helped to allow that meeting to go even a little more expedited and fine.
Thank you. I'm fine with that. I'd be willing to vote now. All right, I will entertain a motion to ask.
What was that payroll one you mentioned?
It's listed as a standing committee. It's not really a committee. It's really just the individuals that assign the payroll and warrants on behalf of someone.
I'd suggest we leave that off.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so I will entertain a motion that at the next subcommittee meeting, for each of the following standing committees, Audit Subcommittee, Capital Planning Subcommittee, Operational Budget Subcommittee, and for the Regional Representation on the Policy Development Subcommittee, that they elect a chair from amongst their members.
Move.
Moved by Paul?
Second.
Second by John. Any further discussion? Sean?
So are all of those except for the policy one are specific to the region?
Even the, even, I think amongst, the way I made the motion was that you, amongst the regional members of the policy committee, that you will elect essentially a chair amongst yourselves.
Okay.
So how you choose to run the meeting would be between you and the other school committee representation, but that way you at least know who is on behalf of the region, representing the region.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can I close? So are there multiple chairs then?
No, there, well, not.
You could have a chair that's a Southborough or Northborough committee. I'm just confused about.
No, no, in other words, well, because the policy committee meetings are joint sometimes.
Yeah.
Right.
So they have, they'll have to decide amongst themselves how they're going to, we can't direct the joint policy committee as to how they're going to function. But if the policy group meets as a regional committee, in other words, only as the region, they can have a, they can have a chair amongst themselves.
So we will not have three chairs chairing from the joint policy?
Yeah.
Well, we will.
Has this come up at the other? Has this come up at the other committees?
I doubt it. I think we've, I think we've had similar issues where, not issues, but challenges where the meetings aren't as efficient as possible because we haven't really done some pretty good.
I love the idea. I just want to make sure, kind of like being a good neighbor to the other committees, and would like to get that in place for the policy committee in a supportive manner without like a directive to them or something.
And I can give you an example. So the joint policy subcommittee, so oftentimes we start the meeting by asking anyone if they want to chair the meeting.
Yes. I totally know.
So let's say, you know, does anyone want to chair the meeting? And then, you know, Northborough and Southborough will say, well, let's have the region chair. You have an elected, elected chair to chair the meeting.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All right. Do a roll call vote on the motion on the table. Kathleen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And IMES as well, the motion passes. Thank you.
So next in your packet is the proposed budget calendar. I will note two dates that have been added, actually three dates. The Southborough Town Meeting was selected by the Select Board. That is on April seventh, twenty five. The Northborough Town Meeting is on April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. And Southborough scheduled a Southborough Special Town Meeting for the purpose of discussing the new rebuilding project on May tenth, twenty twenty five.
FY twenty six budget presentation, Becky?
Okay, so just to give the committee a little bit of an overview of what our budget process looks like, and also just to give reminders about what FY twenty five looks like as well as we were preparing that. The first slide I just wanted to highlight, and I've spoken about this in previous years. I think in municipal government, really, there are two types of budgets that we probably most frequently hear about. And those are level funded budgets and then level services budgets. A level funded budget would be the scenario where you're taking the same amount of money from one fiscal year to the next fiscal year and having to make do with those same funds. So in this type of a scenario, you really would be making drastic cuts. You would be reducing services. There would certainly be no new positions or new, new services because we would need to meet those contractual obligations that we have already in order to cover those. The next type, which is our level services budget, is where we have the same type of services that we are providing in the previous fiscal year, and we are increasing our budget in order to provide those same type of services. That would be just enough to cover our salaries, again, our contractual obligations, and we would not be talking about any new positions, programs, or services. I do think that at the region, we have really been able to add some programs and services over the past few years. I think Michelle Kellen and her work is a great example of some of the work that we've done here at the high school. So we have been able to be a little bit better than a level services budget. We just talked about the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget priorities, so I don't want to harp on those. But just to give you an overview of what the process looked like last year. So when we first started out, we had our initial budget requests that came into the finance team, and those came in in October. And I will be getting our responses for this year next Wednesday. So a week from today, I'll really start to process the FY twenty six budget. You can see that the initial budget request was just over thirty million dollars, which was a two point eight eight percent increase over FY twenty four, or three point four million dollar increase. We then applied our circuit breaker right off the bat to that to come in at our preliminary budget that was presented to the school committee in December. And that budget was twenty nine million, three hundred and thirty two thousand, which was a ten point three one percent increase. After that, we continued to have conversations with the leadership team here at the high school, with the central office leadership team, and then also with the Operational Budget Subcommittee. And we were able to bring that budget down by one point four million dollars. And we presented a revised preliminary budget in January of twenty seven million, eight hundred and seventy one thousand, four hundred and twenty six. That number actually ended up being our final budget. That was recommended by Greg in February and approved by the school committee in February and ultimately at both town meetings. And then our historical budget increases. So I wanted to show you since FY twenty where our budget increases have been. For the most part, we're, I'd say, within about a three to four percent increase. We do have two years that are more outliers. The first one would be FY twenty one where we had a one point five percent increase. For those of you who are on the committee, at that time, you will recall that we had an approved budget. At that point, we had not gone to town meeting with the pandemic. We weren't sure what the financial climate was going to look like in FY twenty one. So we really worked to get that budget down to a one point five percent increase for FY twenty one. And then last year, we were a little bit higher than we normally were with a four point eight two percent appropriated budget increase. When we start the process of developing a budget, we're really looking at what we think those impacts are going to be for that fiscal year as we're, as we're working on that. In FY twenty five, we had identified both general education and special education transportation. With special education transportation, we knew that our contract with ABC or Aspen Valley Collaborative was coming to an end, and they were going to be going out for bid for that. So we knew that that was a real variable for us. Special education out of district tuition, that I think is always a variable for us just because there are new students who move into the district or who are identified. And couple that with a fourteen percent increase in FY twenty four on those tuition costs. So we were still working with those numbers as well as any increases for FY twenty five. Health insurance was also an unknown. We ultimately ended up with a seven point nine percent increase, but that continues to be something that we will watch for FY twenty six. And then our supplies and material costs, we were still seeing the lingering effects of inflation last year. Many of the materials that we were purchasing were much higher than we had seen in previous years. And then lastly, that year marked the last year of our ESER funding. So we no longer have ESER funding as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And I'm happy to report that we had fully expended that, I think, prior to the end of FY twenty four. So twenty six, the list looks very similar with the exception of crossing off ESER. We obviously have talked about the general education transportation and the fact that we're going to be going out for bid with, over the next month or so for that contract, so that remains an unknown and a potential impact. And then lastly, our grant allocations, the funds that we receive from the federal government for our rent titling grants, for our title grants, our IDA special education grants, we are seeing a decrease in those funds that are coming from the federal government and from DESI. So that's something that we are watching closely as well, because there are certain things that we have been including on those grants that need to find a home now in the operational budget. I also wanted to share with the committee, and I guess there was a new report that was released just the other day. And so the inflation is continuing to come down. This report is as of August. The report that was released last week is actually showing two point four percent inflation for the calendar year. So it is continuing to creep down each month, not much, but that is a good sign for us going forward. And then lastly, just the budget process. I think we mentioned that we started this process in August when we first met with the NASA team over the summer just to review some of the budget goals and the budget expectations going into that process. We have started the work with the regional school committee in terms of looking at the budget calendar and our goals. We provided all of our spreadsheets to the NASA team on September sixteenth, and those are due to me next Wednesday, October twenty third. We've also started to have preliminary conversations with our towns and with the leadership team. And we are going to be starting the work of the capital planning and looking at those plans for going forward for FY twenty six. In November, that work will continue, where we will hopefully have approval of both the capital plan and the budget priorities in November. In December, that marks our first presentation to the school committee with the preliminary budget. And we continue the work to fine tune it until we get to January, when we present either our revised preliminary or our recommended budget. In January, February, and March, we're looking at the budget. The school committee is then voting on the final budget. We're meeting with our financial advisories in both towns, and we are having a public hearing on the budget. And then finally, it culminates with the two town meetings. And as Greg said, it is Monday, April seventh in Southborough, and then Monday, April twenty eighth in Northborough. And so that is the budget process in a nutshell.
Did you say that in FY twenty four that out of district tuitions went up by fourteen percent?
Yes. So the Operational Services Division of the, it's a section of the Office of Inspector General, they review all contracts, and they will assign an inflationary rate for special education tuitions. In FY twenty four, they did allow all of the private schools to have a fourteen percent increase on their tuitions. And that is not typical this year. I think it is a three point four two percent increase. So that was really not the norm. They cited increased, which we're all facing, but increased staff, staffing costs, the inability to really staff the programs as their main driver in that.
Any additional comments or questions? Thank you, Becky. Next up is FY twenty five assessments.
So Becky's doing such a great job.
Greg's going to be so sick of me.
So at the last meeting in September, we talked about assessments and also FY twenty five budget was based on projections. We didn't have the actual numbers for state aid, regional transportation. So typically, we get those numbers when the governor's budget is passed, which was in July. So now we have accurate numbers, and now the committee has a decision to make around what to do with the increased funding from stating. So Becky, do you want to?
Sure.
Options?
Sure, and I did provide the committee with a memo just outlining the two options that I, that we are proposing tonight. So the first option would be for the school committee to revote the assessments based on the updated chapter seventy, the regional transportation reimbursement, the minimum local contribution. the minimum local contribution, the amount that we have in the regional transportation fund, as well as the debt figures for the athletic complex as those interest charges are now known. So that, by passing that option, the assessments would change for Northborough where it would return 203,178 to the town. It would reduce their assessment from a 7.88% increase over FY24 to a 6.52% increase. In Southborough, it would lower their assessment by 126,812. And again, it would reduce their assessment percentage from 6.89% to 5.47%. Option two would be not to adjust for chapter 70 or the regional transportation figures. We would only adjust for the updated minimum local contribution, the amount that we have in the regional transportation fund and the debt figures. The one number in those three that we really should, or we do need to make sure that is included in this assessment is that regional transportation fund. We do need to vote to make sure that that is accounted for in our assessments to the two towns. So in this scenario, it would lower Northborough's assessment by 98,639 and reduce their percentage increase from 7.88 to 7.27. And then Southborough's would be reduced by 61,479 and their increase would reduce from 6.89% to 6.2. So the difference for us is, I'm sorry, the difference between those two options for Northborough was 104,539 and six for Northborough and then 65,332 for Southborough. Any additional funds that we would have would then fall to our excess and deficiency at the end of the fiscal year. And those funds could potentially be used towards the phase two of the athletic project, the amenities building. And so those are the two scenarios and I welcome any questions on that.
Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Have there been any discussions with the town?
So we've had preliminary conversations with Mark Purple about kind of the different options. And then in Northborough, not had conversations with the town administrator because. So I think the, I think the, we both have voted budgets. So the schools have appropriated amounts for, in their budgets in the town. So if it doesn't, if it's not turned back to the town, it falls back to the regionally. And the, if it's turned back to the town, it falls back to their free cash. The conversation I did have with Mr. Purple was the fact that amenities building, the proposed, you know, budget that we had, 470,000, will not fund the project. And therefore, most likely will need to either come back to the communities and ask for the additional funding or find a way within other funding mechanisms within the regional school committees influence to be able to fund the project. And this, this would be.
I have a question. If we use option two, do we envision, do we envision that the 470,000 that we have already received from the communities for the, for the amenities building, plus the additional sources of revenue will actually result in the needed renovations of that facility?
So we have been having internal conversations as well as conversations with our GBA, our architects. We have asked them to really look at the plans that they've put forward. We are coming up with some new scenarios where we're adhering to the plumbing codes and the plumbing requirements. And we're making sure that we have the number of facilities that are required, but maybe not doing some of like the changes in terms of like where the window is, those type of cosmetic things, just making sure that we have a building that is functional and can serve the purposes of the community.
So we've asked them to amend the scope and focus on plumbing and stay within our budget. So that is what RGB is working on currently.
Either way, we could use the 169,000, we're gonna need the 169,000. I like option two then.
Yeah, I, I would say, just to express an opinion, I like option two as well because in the event it doesn't get used, it goes into excess and deficiency anyway, which we can only use to offset taxpayer, you know, act on the budget for the next fiscal year anyway. Joan?
Thank you. Option two, does that fall in with, within the guidelines of our regional agreement? Is there anything in our original agreement that would include this from happening?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion or comments? Is the committee ready to vote on an option tonight? Or do you want more time to deliberate? I will entertain a motion to adopt option two as described in the packet.
Second.
Who's the?
Move second?
Moved by John, second by Matt. Any additional discussion? All right, we'll have a roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And IMES as well, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
And the last item under the superintendent's report to the committee is athletic complex project update. So we just had some discussion, but Keith, do you want to provide a?
Yeah, there were three topics, now there are two.
Yeah.
And now, like Becky said, RGB is, we met with them last week and they are going to come back to us with some of their recommendations of how to scale the scope so we can get closer to our, to our budget. So we are eagerly looking forward to that and we hope to hear from them within the next couple of days. I hope to at least preliminary review what they have. The other two topics, yeah, John?
So I've heard this a couple times now. I appreciate us trying to scale the scope, but I just want to make sure that whatever we come up with is going to be as nice as what we currently have. So I guess I'm not really interested in cutting corners here if it's gonna look like something still from 1940. So we should be really thoughtful on that as of our, you know, from, from what this is going to look like. Because right now, it looks great. And expectations from the community was that all of this was going to happen. So us deciding to reduce scope, that, that's a, that's an outcome that's gonna live with us for many, many years. That's just my point, my, my observation.
I think it's a valid, it's a valid observation. I don't really know if it's within the scope of the school committee to ask this, but to come up with varying levels of what we could potentially fund.
So, I mean, I could just, I mean, I'll just make some general comments that we agree that the first priority is to make sure we're in compliance with, with the number of, you know, facilities. That's a number one requirement. The second requirement is to make sure that the space is usable and functional and is a place for gatherings. Is a space where, you know, we can use for amenities and concessions. So those are all goals and we, we have some ideas to accomplish that goals while focusing on fixtures first and then a larger landscaping plan and concession plan second. I think we'll be able to accomplish both with how we're thinking about it. We also are working with Varon Landscaping Design. So he has been a key part of kind of a much bigger picture for that space. So that, that is also part of the equation that we're working on.
I thought that was phase two.
That is going to be incorporated into phase two.
Because we have the money?
No, just, just some ideas that we have and.
Okay.
In terms of the scope, we're still talking about, it's being used as a concession stand?
Yes.
Some sort?
Correct.
Okay. But maybe the window doesn't shift to the side.
Correct. But that means that the space could have alternative uses and not just storage. So that's some of the conversations we're having, whether, you know, there is an athletic training room there where an ice machine can be installed and, and a table. So it's, it's comfortable for our athletic team to, you know, do some of those things. It's just one of the ideas that's popped up that wouldn't require any jackhammering or walls to come down. It would just be using the space that's already in the air, but looking, thinking of it in, in a different way.
So I think the, the way we're approaching it is that 470,000 will be for the plumbing project.
Right.
The additional money that we have through, you know, the additional, that will follow to the bottom line of E and D will be used to look at the concession and the landscaping.
Yeah.
So the, that is how we'll accomplish the two. The, so just in, in terms of scope, the construction bid alone was the total budget, 470,000. And that, and that was to relocate the concession windows to the other side. So it was significant for what we were trying to accomplish. And we think we can accomplish it in a different way.
That was the construction bid without funding?
That was without. So it was a million dollars total?
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, so I, I definitely, I, I am anticipating that by the time of our, of our next meeting, we, we should have options to, to discuss. So that's our, that's our hope for the next, for the November meeting. The other two things worth noting is that we have continued our punchless items with DW, our construction firm, as well as our project manager, Gail Associates. We met with them last week to kind of finalize some of that. And I can report as of today, they were working on them. So we are, had a little finite list with them of wrapping things up. So things are in very good shape and we're getting good response both from DW and Gail on what we've proposed to have cleaned up. So that's a good thing. The last thing worth noting is that Assabett Valley Regional Technical High School completed their exterior renovation of the two maintenance spaces, the old snack shack and the maintenance building. That was completed today ahead of schedule by a couple of weeks, which is fascinating. They've had great weather and that's proven to really help them out. So a huge thank you to Assabett. Wayne Carlson is the coordinator of that program. He has been awesome to work with. He collaborated with Mike Gorman frequently to make sure we were on target and it, it looks fantastic. So I was able to take a walk around it prior to the meeting today and it looks, looks outstanding. So a huge thank you to Assabett for their work of beautifying that, those, and much needed renovation to the exterior of those two spaces.
Is one of those punchless items a sound system by any chance?
Yes, it is. So not for them, but for us, that's something that we are taking care of. We do have a contractor coming out in the next few days to do an evaluation to see what options are available to us. Hopefully, it's something as small as a tweak or a repair and maybe the replacement of a small equipment item. And hopefully, that'll be part of the assessment that we gain once they can go up and take a deeper dive into the system.
I thought it was a good under warranty.
It was not new. The, the sound system was pri, was, was taken down prior to the project and was reinstalled after. So it was something that we felt we had good life expectancy with, but one component at minimum that didn't make it the way we'd like. So that's what needs to be evaluated now that it's all up and it's not performing well. So we're hoping for a good, clean prognosis with that.
Is there a way as the regional school committee that we can send a letter to their school committee and thanks and just explaining this and just making sure our relationships are healthy ecosystems of interconnected, interconnectedness? You know, but on behalf of the school committee to just do that as a reach out. That seems quite appropriate.
Do we pay them?
There, there is a fee. We pay for the, the supplies and materials, obviously. And then there is a.
It's a percentage.
It's a percentage of the total cost of those supplies that ultimately gets moved over to Assabett for their services. But it's very minimal compared to the 1.1 million dollars we were gonna pay for the amenities building.
Is it common for, like, would it be uncommon for us to make a donation to something relevant to them? Like especially that, that particular school? I mean, presumably, it'd be nice if those kids could get a $500 gift check for building supplies or something like that. Might be nice.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, a couple of thoughts. I think it would be nice. But also, we are a member of the Assabett Vocational Technical High School. We send kids there. We pay assessments for this type of work. So as much as we want to say it's, it's a great partnership, this is what they do. This is part of their programming and this is part of how they get back to their member communities.
I'm gonna provide lunch next week too.
We can provide.
So we're gonna find them. They're gonna be in Southborough next week working with the DPW and I, I plan to provide them lunch one of their afternoons.
But we will write a letter and thanking.
Yes.
Getting canes?
That's a little too rich.
That completes my report, yeah.
Thank you. All right, on to old business, 2024, 2025, some committee and liaison assignments. There have been some updates and that's included in the packet. I know, John, I think at the, at the meeting last night, you asked that you wished, do you wish to be a member of the capital planning?
Sure, sure.
You were begging. I think you were begging.
I know there's currently four members, would there?
Uh, no, well, there's plenty of members, so I don't wanna.
Are you sure?
Well, it doesn't seem like that.
Well, I mean, it is exciting.
Sure, I'll, yeah.
Can we have too many people? We can't have more than four.
Okay, so.
So no, there's no room. That's fine, thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on to solar update.
So at the September meeting, we did present the addition of a solar array on the roof here at Algonquin. And we did receive some questions from committee members after the meeting, after it was voted, that allowed us to kind of dig a little bit deeper into the power purchasing agreement. So I'll turn it over to Keith to just talk about some of the findings and some of the changes that we think are, require a revote from the committee.
Great. So I do have a couple of slides and it wasn't quite ready yet, four, four-year packet. It's gonna be probably pretty dense, so don't worry about it too much. But what we're, what we're looking at is the second phase of our solar array. This is the language change that was found and adjusted. So on the left was the original proposal, which essentially what it did is it made it the expense of us to remove and then replace the panels. What we were able to do is adjust that language and it is highlighted on the right side so that it would be the provider's responsibility to do the removal and reinstallation of that. And as you can imagine, that does have an expense. And in this particular case, that was a delta of $500,000 for the removal of those panels and then the reinstallation of those for the purposes of a roof replacement. So one thing that's important to note, we did talk about last month, is that this section of roof, we got an updated report on its stability and we're gonna at minimum get another seven years out of that roof space before it needs to be replaced and hopefully even, even more. So Greg, we can pop on to the next slide. Okay, so for, this was the original proposal that we shared in the chart and it's kind of not completely clear, but it's approximately 1.5 million dollars of anticipated savings over the course of the 20-year PPA term. This was based on a rate of just over seven cents for the kilowatt hour, which is a very strong rate is one that why we were eager to get that locked in. So that, that's how that kind of immaterialized. So, that, that's how that kind of amortizes over the twenty, twenty years of the PPA. And Greg, if you go to the next slide, with the adjustments of the wording that we had to get that roof replacement in place, we do retain that seven and a half cent rate up until the seventh year, which is equivalent to the roof report that we got, and then it's amortized from year seven through year twenty at approximately fourteen cents for the kilowatt hour. We still are able to retain a pretty sizable savings over the course of that twenty years, but it no longer equals that one point five million. It's, it's more of a one point two million savings over the course of, of that time. And I do want to thank Select for their, their work on this and their partnership. They did identify that as something that was, was missed and, and made the necessary adjustments, and are also cost-sharing that removal and replacement of the panels, so we can support the agreement that we would like to have in place. So, kind of in a summary, and this is important to kind of, as we are plotting forward, our current array is producing thirty-two percent of our total electricity consumption here at Algonquin. The proposed array, which we're calling phase two, is expected to produce fifty-five percent on our second meter, and we do have a total of three meters here at Algonquin, two are main and one is supplementary. So, over, with combining the current array with the proposed array, we are going to be generating approximately fifty percent of our total electricity usage for Algonquin, which is obviously a good, good foothold to have, and we are utilizing the structures that we currently, currently have in place to do that. The other benefit we're seeing with this is that that rate and locking that in, even if, even if it's just for that seven years, is quite advantageous for, for the district to have it in place. So, thank you for the committee for identifying this discrepancy, and I'm happy to work with Select on what we've been able to produce, and I would recommend moving forward if the committee is at will. Any questions?
When would it start?
The hope is that construction would begin before the end of the year. In fact, a majority of it does have to be completed before the end of the calendar year to really maximize on the savings, and Select is prepared to do that.
You said we'd share in the cost of removing them?
That's right.
If we have to? So, how much are we on the hook for?
So, it, it's the difference between the one point five and the one point two.
So, three hundred K.
It's about a three hundred thousand, and so they are taking on the additional two hundred thousand of the five hundred that it takes to take it down and reinstall it.
And that's, so in seven years, we're going to have to encumber that?
The, yes, well, for the purposes of the agreement, they have to amortize it for the full twenty years, but the hope is that, you know, we wouldn't need to actually do the roof replacement until, let's say, year nine or year ten from now. However, for the PPA's purposes, that rate change would occur at that seventh year mark.
But the point is, we're not gonna encumber anything.
Right, it's just...
Correct, yeah, correct.
Yes, yes.
Points.
We're not writing a check.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So, in one year, between the seventh...
Thank you, John.
Sixth and the seventh year, we'll see an increase in our, our rates by about twenty-seven thousand or so.
Right.
So, is there any additional discussion? All right, so, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the revised power purchase agreement and lease agreement as presented. Move by Paul?
Second.
Second by Sean. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And IMES as well, the motion passes unanimously. Again, thank you for your...
Thank you, no thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is policy development and/or distribution. The animals on school premises during school hours, it's an approved policy, it's included in your packet. Any public comments? Or from the committee? Joan?
I always have something. I'd just like to say that on Saturday, I have a council of agents meeting in Northborough as the representative, the liaison from the Northborough School Committee, and just connecting those two together and through the chair, I would like to ask if through the principals' report that was given tonight, if there is some way that the seniors could attend a dress rehearsal, if possible, on either the concert, the chorus concert, or the orchestra concert on October thirtieth? I know that there's many seniors that have probably had musical talents in the pack, and would love to see the talents that are students back. So, would it be possible, and making an update on Saturday, if you could check out on that and get back to me?
I would... Yes, I will check on that. I'm not certain they do a dress rehearsal for our concerts, but I will find out for you, and while I'm at it, I'll find out about a dress rehearsal for our Fall Musical, which is in November, and that could be yet another place to try to network with our senior center. I will check on that.
Yes, and I know last year, when you hosted the Dollmen, you, L.L., from Northborough on campus, and going through an athletic complex and, you know, seeing the new football field and everything, so I really appreciate any way we can reach us, the seniors and showcase the talents of our campus students, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any additional comment?
Uh, sorry.
John?
I just have, I have the same comment, and I think it's a thing necessarily clear up. So, if the, if the dog or the animal is in the car when you're dropping off, is that on school grounds?
Yes. So, if your dog is in, in confined car, I think you, you are fine.
It's just not clear.
I think, just a comment on this policy, the policy, joint policy subcommittee is going to be taking this policy up again, making some modifications, so we will take into account some of these areas that are, are not clear and make updates.
All right, on to personnel, distribution and personnel report.
So, in your packets, the personnel report as of October sixteenth, I think, a very short personnel report, which is always good news, means that we are pretty near fully staffed, so nice job to Principal Bevan and his team and central office, HR.
Thank you. Communication, oh, sorry, John?
Just figure, how, how's your sub situation? Are you able to find, I know that's been an issue in the past.
We are okay, and largely in part due to we access our large, big public spaces like our cafeteria and auditorium, when we crest over like the threshold where we have too many absences to be handled by subs and directly put into classrooms, which is our first preference. And once in a while, we'll get some confluence of events that result in too many, too few subs and too many people calling out, and that's how we handle it, and it's, it's worked out pretty well.
We've been recruiting subs from the show, but...
That's where they always...
All right, approval of bills and payrolls, that's done electronically. And agenda items for next month, school calendar discussion and final performing arts presentation. Anybody has anything they want to potentially add, John?
Some point with these, and, yeah, just to, I mentioned that, I think, at the last meeting, but just to put it on record somewhere in the next few months, yeah.
And Joan?
Yes, an update next month on the different standing committees and the chairs that were elected, or even just a new chief with those positions, and maybe an asterisk next to the person who's the chair, because we had a question, if I had something I wanted to bring up about policy, instead of going through the superintendent's office or going through charlequerry, I could just call that person who's the chair and give them my input.
That's a great idea, thanks, John.
It'd be helpful.
Oh, thank you, I think it would be as well.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any additional items? All right, on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Move by Paul?
Second.
Second by Sean. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Sean?
Sorry.
Yes.
I'm excited to. Matt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.